And I'll go back to item four, Mr. Hopkins.
Again, good morning, President Valier, members of the board. The item before you reference the Old Castro Valley Library is, the staff is seeking direction on the future use of the former facility. It's located at 2,255 Redwood Road. Just a second, I'm not sure where it is. Okay, sorry for the technical difficulty. The item before you today is determine that either it is in the best use to utilize the property for the purpose of providing space for organized veterans group and services, and directing the general services agency to return to your board for approval of a specific form and scope of use and proposed disposition of property, or to determine that it is in the best interest to utilize the real property primarily to provide for development of veterans, I'm sorry, of affordable housing or other related properties. Just to give you some brief facts and history of the former Castro Valley Library, what I've done is provided a consolidation of previous presentations to just remind you of the facility we're discussing. Again, this facility was built in 1962, sits on approximately, almost an acre. The facility has been vacant since 2009 with the opening of the new Castro Valley Library, and it has been vacant since that time. The zoning of the area that the library sit is currently zoned residential with one dwelling unit allowed, and it is surrounded by residential and some multifamily, and also low commercial. A diagram of the existing facility's floor plan. These are photos from a previous assessment that date back to 2014. And when we, in another discussion where we discussed the possibility of the veterans' use, we provided you information showing where all of the current veteran memorial facilities within the counties are located, depicting the existing Castro Valley Library approximately two miles from the Hayward Veterans Memorial Building. So when we explore these options further, the option to repurpose for veteran use, the county may repurpose the facility for veteran use that may include a veterans memorial building destination. There are several options to execute this decision, including but not limited to the appointment of a veterans commission, or a license to a nonprofit for the furtherance of that purpose. One of the requirements that will be required of your board is to deem it to be necessary to meet a social need of the population of the county. Also, under Government Code 26227, we are utilizing that method would be compliant, and that that license agreement can be for terms less than fair market value. A competitive solicitation is not required, and the Surplus Land Act does not apply. Option B, which is a ground lease for affordable housing, the county may ground lease the property to an affordable housing developer for mixed use, including residential rentals, with a minimum of forty percent of the units must be affordable to households with incomes equal or less than seventy-five percent of the maximum income of lower-income households, which at least must be affordable to very-low-income households in accordance with Government Code 25539. Again, the Surplus Lands Act does not apply, and a competitive solicitation will be recommended. When we explore costs associated to those two options, the county cost comparison for those two options, if we choose to do a repurposing of the facility for a nonprofit veterans' use, up to and include the possibility of a veterans memorial, we're looking at a cost that could range from $1.5 million to $9 million. If you recall from previous presentations, in order for us to move forward with allowing a third party to use this facility, there are some things we have to mitigate, and that mitigation is the low end of that number. If your board opts to go as far as to making this facility an additional veterans memorial building, that capital requirement can be up to $9 million, and include an annual operating cost of approximately $108,000 a year. If your option is to explore a ground lease for affordable housing development, the capital cost estimate is approximately $40,000, and there's no annual cost estimate. With that, I'll address any questions you may have.
Supervisor Marley?
Yes, thank you, President. I, Castro Valley Library is in District Four, but I know, I just have a lot of concern about this particular property. And we've been, I've been working with the community on this for probably a good three years or so. This has come to the Unincorporated Services Committee on at least two occasions. It's been to the Castro Valley MAC, Castro Valley Municipal Advisory Council, on a few occasions as well. I've met with the veterans and others, and other veterans have circulated petitions and gotten a lot of signatures in support of the facility being put towards veterans' use, and I think there's a lot of support for that in the community of Castro Valley. In fact, we received a letter from the Park Recreation and Historical Commission that the property be preserved and be put to a veterans' use. And I believe also the veterans have met with the Hayward Area Recreation Department. I think their director's here today, he'll probably speak, and Hart, I believe, is interested in working with the veterans on using the Castro Valley Library for veterans' use as well. So there's a lot of synergy among the community, among other stakeholders, to put this facility to use for the veterans. So just to, just with that being stated, I just want to ask a couple of quick questions. So if you go back to your slide, where the slide that says, "Old Castro Valley Library facts," I think it's like slide two or three, that one, yeah. And I don't know if you can answer this question, Director Hopkins, but I believe Chris Basar or Albert can answer this question, Albert Lopez. When it says, "A currently zoned R1CURV, one residential building with one dwelling unit allowed," what does that mean? You know, I know the answer, but I want to get it out there on the floor.
So currently it's zoned, actually, the zoning and the general plan designation are distinct from one another. The current zoning is exactly as you see it up there, and so obviously that means an extremely different type of land use, apart from a large housing development, or even what's being proposed now is the existing zoning. Now, I should mention, the general plan designation is PF. It's a public facility designation. That's something that came about when we revised the Castro Valley General Plan a few years back, and the community wanted to make sure that publicly-owned properties were given an opportunity to be in, put in a public use. So that public facilities designation, as well as zoning, would need to change in order for us to do pretty much anything that's being discussed in these scenarios from GSA.
So, so if you could go to the slide, we talked about the options under consideration. So, under option A, so would there have to be any changes with the general plan or with zoning for option A?
Well, I think the public facilities designation would be less complicated, right, Albert? Feel free to come up. Yeah, so I think in that case, it depends on how, this is all defined, but my understanding of projects that have been talked about so far under A would potentially work within the general plan designation.
Yeah, that's right, and also the CD MAC is considering rezoning that property to implement the general plan. The general plan is public facility. If it was rezoned a public facility, then something like option A would fit right in that land use category.
Okay, and then option B, what would be the general plan and the zoning implications of option B?
You'd need to change both, right? Yeah.
Yeah, you have to change both to go, well, the R1 zoning would allow one unit per 5,000 square feet, so you could technically get about seven or eight units on there now.
A maximum seven rate?
Yes, if you want to go above that, it would have to be the general plan and the general plan.
And the general plan, and change the zoning and the general plan, that would have to go through the Castro Valley MAC, Planning Commission, to the Board of Supervisors to even achieve option B, right?
Depending on the number of units, yes.
Yeah, because if we're talking affordable housing, seven units or more, then the zoning would have to be changed. And then with option B, are there any state laws that require us to utilize the property for affordable housing? Because, you know, there are a lot of new state laws out there, and I just need to understand if there's anything that requires us or is triggering us to utilize the property for affordable housing.
Currently, Assembly Bill, I believe, is 1486, with change, made some changes to the Surplus Lands Act, requires us, if we're in the process of surplus and property, to make affordable housing the first priority.
But under this situation, under either option A or B, we're not going down the surplus land route, so 1486 wouldn't be applicable? Is that what you're saying? And if you can't answer, can County Council answer? Because on the slides, it's option A, Surplus Land Act does not apply, option B, Surplus Land Act does not apply. So if the Surplus Land Act doesn't apply, does 1486 apply?
1486 is a bill that made amendments to the Surplus Land Act, so you're really talking about the same thing.
Okay, okay, so it doesn't apply. So it doesn't apply, Andrew, so it doesn't apply? Or does it apply?
It does not apply to either options A or B, because both of those formulas that are presented qualify for exemption.
Okay, that's, just wanted to get that out there. And then, let me see here, there's one other question I had. Oh, no, so I'll wait for the speakers, because if they don't, if they don't answer, if they don't present it, then I'll ask the question from, as a result of the speakers.
So I just want to be clear, because I don't want to leave this proceeding having misled your board, or anyone about what is required. The action item that's before you, the board letter that was presented before you, is about deciding two different paths. Whether or not you, GSA or CDA goes off on a path that involves using this property for some, at this point, undefined or not completely defined use for veterans, or if we're going off down a path of using this property for veterans' housing. That's, those are the sort of two prongs that are in the board letter before you. But because the actual nature of the use that would occur under the use it for veteran, the non-housing option, that hasn't been completely solidified, and there could be different ways and different paths to achieve that. And depending on which path is ultimately chosen, it may impact whether or not a surplus land, the Surplus Land Act applies. So I just want to be clear, that when we say, "Oh, it doesn't apply," that's, that may not be true. There's a path to provide, to make the property available for veterans' use where it would not apply, but if the path that is chosen is not that path, then it might apply. So I just, you know, it's, I want to be clear.
I love lawyers. I mean, that was a lot of gobbledygook there, Donna. And I respect you and all the staff, but that's a lot of stuff, and they apply, but it may not apply, depending on the path we take, then it might not apply, but it could apply. I'm not making fun of you. I got you, I got you, I understand, I understand. Okay, I understand, and don't be offended. Don't, don't anyone think I'm, you know, defending County Council. So thank you. The, the thing is with affordable housing, the Castro Valley community is not opposed to affordable housing, but on this particular site, they just feel the better use as it remains a public, under the existing characterization under the general plan, in that it be utilized for the veterans. So they're not opposed to affordable housing, they just think this isn't the best site for that to happen. And then if the board were to go down that road, then there's a number of things that would require the, the support of the community, both the MAC and then the Planning Commission, to achieve that, which I don't think would be achievable through both the MAC or the Planning Commission. Obviously, the board could override the MAC and the Planning Commission, but I'm just saying, I don't think the MAC or the Planning Commission would support it.
Any other questions? Senior, we'll go to the public.
I'm going to speak now, because I think it's important that, maybe the speaker's here where I'm thinking. But, you know, in Dublin, on about the same size land, they build 66 units of affordable housing for veterans. It's called Valor Crossing. They also have a VA Counseling Center, they also have a bode there, they have a community space for a kitchen, Open Heart uses it to serve meals to the residents and also the community, and there's also an area in which veterans can meet. You know, I look at this, and I think, the county can invest $9 million in this old dilapidated building, or we could put it out, and we could find housing for approximately 66 veterans that have served their country, that need affordable housing now. And I don't understand, and I'm going to keep listening, I want to be clear, but I don't understand why we would miss this opportunity to find homes for people that fought for this country. And I've said this before, it's been in the paper, if you have fought for this country, you have a right to housing in this country. And, and I'm just really perplexed to think, we can build 66 units, or approximately 60 units of affordable housing, have a place for the veterans to have meetings, and do what they do at veterans halls, and I realize it's not just, it's also about events that they have there, things like that, and then also have counseling for people that maybe have PTSD or something, some other barrier that may be affecting their ability to get employment, or maybe have somebody there that can help them find employment. You know, that area is surrounded by housing. It's also close to a BART station, where veterans could walk to the BART station to get on BART and go to work. It's on two bus lines, if I remember right, maybe more. It is the best place to book veterans' housing. And why the community doesn't want it, I don't understand that, unless we're back to this old NIMBY thing where we just want housing, we just don't want it here. And we're going to continue to chase our tail around and around and around. So I just thought I would let the speakers know, because evidently it's my day to come down and have your fun with me, but, you know, that's what I'm, why would we miss that opportunity to build a new building, not rehab a building that looks like hell, and then turn around, find housing for veterans, and we don't have to spend the $9 million? I don't understand the disconnect here. The veterans get a brand-new building on the ground floor. We're missing an opportunity if we don't do this, if we don't push this, and this is what county supervisors have to do. We have to show leadership, we have to push this forward, and we have to show the community by, by having 66 veterans, men and women, who currently are having a hard time finding housing, should not be located near mass transit and indecent homes. And I love veterans. I mean, I served in the Navy, my daughter served in the Navy, I get it, but I also know, we have a tremendous amount of veterans that are on the streets today, and you, this is a huge missed opportunity. If we don't just throw it out to a nonprofit and say, "Build us something like you built in Dublin, build us Valor Crossing," and everybody gets a new facility to have their events. So now you all can all come up.
All right. Tom Seon, did you want to speak on this item? Tom Seon, Thomas Seon? Do you want to speak on this item? Are you present? Okay. Mike Martin? And then Linda Tangren? Okay, sounds fine.
I'm Mike Martin, I'm the president of the nonprofit that was established after getting some direction from the Castro Valley MAC. I'm a member of various veterans service organizations, and have been a community member in the East Base since 1990. We want to present, the three of us want to present to you what our vision is. What is it that we're going to do there that's going to have an impact? The, the community has spoken very loudly to us. I did hand in, at one of the prior retreats or board meetings or something. I'm going to review those items on that petition very quickly. So number one is that the residents of Castro Valley support the use of the, by the veterans organization to operate the Old Castro Valley Library as a community building serving the needs of the veterans and the residents of Castro Valley. The residents of Castro Valley believe that a building paid for through an assessment of our property taxes should remain a resource to serve the community, as well as a small meeting and conference center. The residents of Castro Valley support the unanimous vote by the Castro Valley MAC, not once, not twice, but three times, unanimous vote, to rename the building and get it turned over for veterans' use and community service use. The residents of Castro Valley oppose the demolition of this mid-century modern building. It is conceivable that that could be earmarked as a historical building. The MAC, the MAC meetings were very, what should I say, contentious at times, in terms of the community coming out to lend their opposition, even to us. You know, they had a nice, quiet library for a while. Some of the folks came in and says, "Oh, we're happy to have you veterans there." Just remember, you can't have any meetings after five o'clock. So, I mean, that's what was going on. During our discussions with you over the last three years, one of, during one of those meetings, it was brought up by the county administrator that maybe we could move the Alameda County Veterans Service Office that is currently located in Eastmont to the Castro Valley Library. The Castro Valley Library being a very centrally-located facility for the county. So the residents of South County and East County could go to that facility and get their benefits, counseling, and things of that nature from the folks that are currently in Eastmont. Many of the folks in East County and South County do not go to Oakland, they just don't do it. What our plan is, we're going to discuss in more, in more detail, but the foundation that was established is ready, willing, and able to help fund this whole operation, if we get it put into the right format. And that's the big question, right? Can we put it in a format that we can mitigate this 1.5 to $9 million number, which we feel we absolutely can impact and reduce, maybe even to zero? But you've got to give us the opportunity to do it. That's just sort of the bottom line. We will be providing all, all different kinds of levels of service to help those brothers of mine who are Vietnam veterans, those that came back from Korea, all the currently serving, all the, I call them the desert rats, the, all the folks that have served since 9/11. They've earned it, we earned it, we deserve it. It was a location that we, the Brotherhood, will bring great service to the county veterans that live here in Alameda County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, you call the order, Mike, who's next?
Good morning, good afternoon, President Valier and members of the board. I'm John McPartlin, a resident of Castro Valley for over 40 years, a veteran, and a member of multiple veterans and civic organizations in Castro Valley, and I speak to you today on their behalf and in their best interest for the Old Castro Valley Library. The vision we collectively and cooperatively have for the library is to provide a space and venue for a multitude of services and activities where community stakeholders are currently either underserved or not served at all. The vision that we had includes providing vet counseling and assistance for veterans transitioning to, from active duty, veterans' benefits and entitlements, homelessness, females, as well as family assistance, and then assistance counseling for medical for the elderly, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam veterans. The library will provide space for the Alameda County Veteran Services Offices at the, at that locations, which currently service South and East County poorly, because it's not their fault, it's geography, provide veterans' meeting space for all the service organizations, VFW, American Legion, and the list goes on. Each of these organizations, by the way, end up having their own military service or veterans' service representatives, but they function poorly, because it's usually one person, and even myself, where I belong to several of those organizations, if I meet a veteran on the street and I want to be able to refer them for assistance, I'm hard-pressed to be able to come up with a location or name or a telephone number. Provide public meetings for, for planning space for civil, civic events, such as the Fall Festival and the Castro Valley Parade. HARD has already committed verbally to a 20-year lease agreement, which would provide a positive cash flow. And it will provide a military library and museum. And lastly, it can be used for event venues of small and medium size. I would end up recommending for that, we would recommend for that, option number eight. I'd like to close with having a statement in regards to the compelling position that Director, or Correctional Supervisor Hagerty ended up making. And in a conversation, in a meeting that myself and several other people had with the president last week, one of the questions that was posed was that, three years ago, when we were looking at this, because of the footprint that we end up having there and the available parking spaces, I believe that the determination was made that that would be inappropriate for housing. And I would, in principle, I agree with Supervisor Scott Hagerty, absolutely 100%. But that determination was made that it wasn't appropriate for that, and I asked that, we end up trying to quantify exactly where that decision or where that opinion came from, whether it was valid or not. And that was left unanswered in our meeting, so I don't know the answer to that. I would change my position depending upon the answer to that question, but for now, I support the activity of the, and all of the work of the veterans' organizations, as well as the petitions that have made for the Castro Valley community, and without that, that information regarding Scott Hagerty's position, I'm going to have to recommend, we will have to recommend option A. Thank you.
Hi, Linda Tangren, Castro Valley resident for nearly 50 years. Served on the Castro Valley School Board, served on Chabot-Las Pecidos College Board, currently the vice president of the foundation, and a previous stint on the Castro Valley MAC. At a previous meeting, I spoke of the three separate unanimous votes cast by CD MAC. I spoke of the subcommittee that I chaired while on CD MAC. I don't want to neglect to tell you that the unanimous decision by many people in the audience the petitions were signed was to preserve the building. Today, we want to share with you our vision for how we plan to serve the needs of an underserved population that is frequently forgotten in the discussion. Their needs are similar but different than the general population we often discuss. This is a population peppered with traumatic brain injuries. This is a population peppered with traumatic brain injury, post-traumatic stress syndrome, disabled physically and mentally. Poverty may be a result of these problems, but there are many who walk among you who suffer quietly, who do not understand why they feel the way they do, and do not have the resources available because their problems are different. Yes, they served in the military. Yes, they deserve all of our, all of our amenities that we have. When we neglect to treat the veterans as unique cases, we miss the opportunity to bring the resources of the federal government into play, the medical benefits they are entitled to receive, medical care they should be receiving. We will connect them with these resources, find jobs and housing for them, find programs that will provide job training, make sure all necessary forms are filled and, and sent in. They will get the services that they are entitled to with the program that we will offer. Our focus will be providing vets and families with resources they need to survive and a productive return to civilian life. Our services will meet your Vision 2026 for the goals for these vets: eliminate homelessness, healthcare for all, employment for all, re-entry support. We have a commitment from Pastor Jake at First Presbyterian to set aside 25% of the 99 units that they are planning for veterans. We have the Hayward Area Recreation Department, who will lease a portion of the facility that will give us support and maintain our programs for us. We have every intent of doing our own fundraising and keeping this as a viable organization. We have maintained this fight for the last three years. We had no intention of going away. Yes, don't be short-sighted and think that the only thing vets need is a roof over their head or a pillow to lay their head. They need and deserve more. They need access to behavioral healthcare, medical services, and jobs. It will be a place where they will find understanding, acceptance by peers, and serve by peers who have walked in their shoes. This is a safety net for vets. You have an opportunity that will meet your Vision 2026 goals. Please recognize that AB 1486 or AB 2162 do not say that you must tear down a property in order to build the housing. You can repurpose existing property to help you meet Vision 2026. I understand that fully, that Supervisors, you are constantly pulled in different directions, but I ask you to recognize when an organization is willing to share that burden and don't turn your back when opportunity knocks. Now, can I answer a few of your questions?
Do you have any questions?
Well, he made a statement, and I'd like to just respond.
He has a question, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, you might be able to build a building there, but that building exists now. So, those services would be presented.
Linda, wait.
Okay.
Hold on. If they have questions, they'll ask you. Okay, why don't you?
I'm responding to a statement he made, Supervisor Hagerty.
Okay.
In why we're passing up, in why we are passing up this thing.
Linda, hold on.
Okay?
Just out of courtesy for the process, once you've had, you've spoken, the Supervisor has asked his questions. We bring it back to the Supervisors for direction, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else who wants to speak on the item?
I'd like to see if Paul McCurry from HART could come and speak, because I know HART's passed a bond, and HART has resources, and HART has expressed some interest in working with the veterans on this particular site. And as the Hayward Area Recreation District, Special District, I think that would help the veterans to achieve their goal.
Captain Supervisors, so Paul McCurry, General Manager of the Hayward Area Recreation Park District. Over the past two years, we've worked on our Parkmaster Plan, updated that, worked closely with our community, thousands of people in the community, to look at what our needs are. And in Castro Valley alone, we have a need for at least another 10,000 square feet of community space. During that time, the school districts had to take away space we've had in the past for our W art center, which has been a gallery as well as spaces for classrooms. They've also indicated they have a growing student population that is going to force them over the next five years to start to have us not be in other facilities that they have. So, we're desperately looking for public facility space. And so, we did reach out to the county to say, "What's happening at the library?" And found that the veterans were in a process with the county on looking at that site. And so, we did meet with them to determine what they might be doing with their process, with their program, and how those might mesh. We see an opportunity to bring arts programs to that facility that would serve the veterans through art therapy and recreational therapy, therapy services. We do anticipate that we would be able to make a contribution on the capital side of that, as well as operationally to help support the facility on a promotional, promotional basis over time. So, again, these have been discussions with the, the group, and discussions with our ad hoc on acquisition and surplus for our, our district, and we have an interest in working with the veterans.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
And I would just like to say, too, the veterans have, they're capable of raising funds for the capital and the operations, but it's hard for them to raise funds and capital for the operations until they've actually entered into an agreement with the county, because to, to secure funding, they need to have that agreement with the county so that potential philanthropic sources and others know that this is a serious endeavor as opposed to something that's just being, just a dream, but it can be actually a reality. So, I think that's why it's important that the veterans, I think that's why it's important that the board give direction to staff to pursue option A, so that as a result of option A, the veterans, HART, and others can begin the quest of raising the necessary funds for, for capital as well as operations. And we also have a more definitive picture of what, what this will look like as a result of that negotiation with the veterans' organization.
Vice President Carson.
Yeah, thank you very much. I can't believe what I'm hearing today, to be honest with you. Supervisor Miley just beat up the healthcare agency director about finding housing right away, called a state of emergency, "We need housing right away." I remember hearing you say that, beating up the healthcare agency director on it, around finding housing right away, housing right away. And here we are talking about trying to house individuals who serve this country, and, and you are adamantly opposed to it in this location. I can't, I can't understand this. Nobody has had any conversation on this board about not having the services that the veterans want at that site. Nobody hasn't said that they don't want their playhouse or whatever to be there at that site. What we've talked about is also maximizing the use of that site, providing services, but also providing much-needed housing for individuals who've served this country. Not unlike just, well, like Supervisor Hagerty just said, we're getting ready to Oakland, open in Oakland on, on San Pablo and near Grand, a facility that has just been built for veterans that provides services at the bottom and housing on top, getting ready to open in the next couple of weeks. We were there when they broke ground for that. When you look at the number of the homeless that are veterans, that number is high. That number is extremely high. I started off at six o'clock this morning walking around Lake Merritt, and every single time I walk around there early in the morning, I see how many more people every single day are joining the ranks of individuals sleeping in their vehicles. So, you can't come here and tell me that some, some veteran wouldn't want a roof over their head, over their head at a place where they can provide services at the same point. It's ridiculous to say that the roof over the head is not as important as anything else. If you have a roof over your head, then you, maybe you can, you can better respond to the services that are being provided. This is ridiculous that we're having this conversation. This is ridiculous. It's not been an either-or, it's been a both conversation. And for any person who would say, "No, I'd rather have the playhouse as opposed to having playhouse and services and housing," to me has to really go back and, and look at their consciousness in terms of where they really stand on the issue of homelessness. This is an opportunity that the federal government could probably provide some money for veterans for housing, because there's a pool of money that's back there in Washington, DC for that. And for us to abdicate that opportunity and responsibility to go after that money and any other money for affordable housing, low-cost housing for veterans at a place where we have access to property, which is extremely costly, is, you know, I mean, I can't understand how somebody wouldn't support that. The last thing is the "not in my backyard" that Supervisor Hagerty responded to. 25 years ago, on record, in this state of California, then the Secretary of, and I'm trying to think of her name, had a statewide conference in which she said, 20-some years ago, "California's moving in the wrong direction. We're not building enough housing. We're not building enough housing." 20 years ago, must have been more than 1,000 people at that conference in Sacramento. That's what we need to do. We abdicated that. And we know how many people go like, "Yeah, I care about affordable housing. Yeah, I care about workforce housing. Yeah, I care about homeless people having housing. Yes, I care about veterans having housing, but not in my backyard." To me, that's racist to say that you don't want to have someone in your area that desperately needs housing when you have a plot of land that could be used for that purpose, and you don't want that person in your backyard. And so, you know, I, I've been on record since day one about this. It's not about not having the services and having a place for people to meet. You can have that and housing, too. So, why would you not do that?
Okay. Well, is, is there a potential here, Willie, for a win-win situation? Let's assume for the moment that the comments that you've heard, there's an opportunity for veterans to meet, there's an opportunity for veterans to receive services, but there's also an opportunity for veterans to receive housing. And if we went down that path, what kind of scenario would it take? And what kind of funding would it take? And what would be the source? That's, that's my question to staff.
Can I just say something? I know, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, I would suggest that you take a ride out to Dublin and look at Valor Crossing, because there is your win-win.
Okay.
It's got housing, it's got services, it's got meeting spaces, it has a kitchen, it is beautiful, and it is what veterans deserve. I'm not sure that Willie's capable of answering like costs and things like that. I can get you information on what Valor costs and all that, but I think, right now, we're looking at $9 million for just a meeting space, or we're looking at maybe giving the land and having a nonprofit come in and build housing and a meeting space and wraparound services, and it doesn't cost us any money other than we gave the land maybe on a 99-year lease.
Okay, thank you. So, Willie, getting back to what Supervisor Hagerty has laid out, are you familiar with that facility? Did we participate in that? Was that federally funded? What's the model there?
President Valia, here's, here's what I know. I do know at the state level, as recent as two, three months ago, there was about $630 million available for veteran housing. I forgot the name of the organization, but at, once upon a time, the state set aside $675 million, of which, again, a few months ago, there was about $630 million left. I do also know on the federal level, via the HUD, there was funding available for these kinds of programs. Once upon a time, there was funding available with the Veterans Administration. I'm not sure that it still exists. There was a period in time where the Trump Administration had taken that money for some other programs, but I'm unaware as to whether or not it has been replaced. And when we initially began discussions on this many, many years ago, those discussions were based on the availability of that funding at that time. So, I, I think to go back to your core question of is, if there is a happy median, that happy median would exist in what the initial thought was many years ago, which was to explore veteran housing and provide that community space, if you will, in that process. But there is a lot of other things that may or may not bring that to fruition that I can't address at this time.
Okay. But did we participate? Do you know about the example that the Supervisor pointed out? Did we, the county, participate in that process? As you're a member of your staffs?
I think Director Bazar or his staff can answer, but I do believe there was another site in Oakland that CDA participated in, and I'll yield to CDA.
Go ahead, would you introduce yourself, please?
Actually, let me, if I could, President Vaya, I just wanted to, two things. One is, county administrator staff was just noting that there is state bond money that could potentially be utilized here. I think the latest NOFA for the Bay Area has up to $38 million, so that's a factor. I also wanted to just formally introduce our new housing director, who began yesterday, Michelle Starrett. And I'm already pulling her into service. Michelle and I have already, in anticipation of this discussion, had some very initial sort of back-of-the-envelope conversations. But Michelle, in addition to her background with CDA, has a lot of background with housing development, so I think could provide you with some input.
Thank you. Nice to see you all again. I'm excited to be in the new position. Yes, we did participate in Valor Crossing. You spoke at it. It was both early boomerang funds as well as federal home funds that we put into the Dublin project. And it was a couple of years ago, and I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but it was less than $1 million. But we worked with Eden Housing to get that project over the finish line. We came in at the last minute and helped them get into construction. So, that was our role in that project, and it's a very exciting project. As far as how we would build housing on this site, we would definitely have to utilize resources that we have, but also we'd have to go to the state for funding. And, you know, it's a very, it's a small site, but we could probably get around 30, maybe 40 units on it, and the price tag would, depending on the number of units and the type of construction, would be high, and there would need to be some amount of local government funding. So, it would be the unincorporated county having to put housing dollars into that site.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Michelle. Well, we often, if I could, if you don't mind, you know, as elected officials, we often get criticized for saying one thing and doing something else when it comes to affordable housing. So, this body also has an obligation in its own backyard, which is Castro Valley, unincorporated, to, to do something positive with regard to the crisis that we're facing in this country. And in particular, we have a great opportunity to assist veterans. I do believe that a scenario like this, that's just been explained, would be a win-win. And all the veterans that have worked so very hard to use the library for the, that purpose that they've described could still take place. With regard to the NIMBYism, I've heard those arguments from a lot of people from a lot of neighborhoods throughout the Bay Area, and all, it always comes down to the political will of the governing body to make the decision and execute. And so, it just comes down to the political will of this body to make the decision and execute. And, and I know, I respect the MAC process, I understand that, but I also understand that a lot of local people will stand in opposition to anything new in their backyard. That's not uncommon, but it's up to us to step up and do the right thing. So, I'm also leaning in the direction of creating the housing as well, because we can't just talk about it, we have to actually do it. And I know there will probably be some opposition and some pushback, but once it's done and people see the, the benefit, including the veterans in this room, they'll have a beautiful space where they can do everything that their vision has brought forward. Any other comments by the board? Supervisor Miley?
Yeah, I just want to speak a couple of things, or a few things. First of all, it is my district, and just like with mutton busting, just like with the tobacco retail license, it seems like folks want to pick on my district. I respect other people's districts pretty well. But the point, but the point, but the point of the matter is, I, I can push for affordable housing, and I'll continue to push for that, and I'll continue to push anybody and everybody to address the issue of the unsheltered. The question is, I take it on a case-by-case basis. I've listened to my constituents in Castro Valley. I've listened to them. If I thought their position was erroneous, I would be the first to tell them that. I've been in countless meetings with constituents about this. I've been at countless events with constituents in Castro Valley about this. This isn't a question of NIMBYism. This isn't a question of, of people being racist. This isn't a question of, of folks not wanting to have affordable housing. This is a question of what's the best land use decision at this particular location? And with land use, it's always on a case-by-case basis. You always look at that particular piece of parcel, that particular piece of property to determine what's the best use for that particular property. The general plan already zones, already designated to one way, the zoning designates
The general plan already designated it one way, the zoning designates it one way as well. And so what you're trying to do is impose a solution on a particular piece of property that's not appropriate for that type of solution. And if I hadn't been listening to the constituents in Castro Valley over the last three years, as I said, at many, many meetings, at many, many events, listening to their arguments and their positions, I wouldn't be firmly in this position that I'm in in terms of opposing anything other than Option A. And I've been pushing for that. I've been at meetings, we initially started down the road of trying to suggest veteran services and housing on that site. That was explored, we looked at that, we did our analysis and our research, and we made a determination after maybe six to eight months that it wasn't just, it wasn't going to work there. The MAC explored that, my office explored it, we explored it with GSA, we explored it with our planning staff, we explored it, and it just wasn't going to work there. So if the board moves down the road of trying to put this solution on that particular parcel, it's not the appropriate solution for that particular parcel. That particular parcel could be utilized other ways. You've heard from the Hayward Area Recreation Department, Special District that represents that area, you've heard from the Parks Recreation Historical Commission that represents that area, you've heard from the Castro Valley Municipal Advisory Council that represents that area. But the board, in its desire, of which I support, the need for affordable housing and the need to address the unsheltered, I support that comprehensive goal, but I don't support us trying to put that goal and that solution on this particular piece of real estate. So, bottom line is, I'll continue to push for affordable housing, I'll continue to push anyone and everyone around unsheltered, and I'll do that unapologetically, and I'll continue to support my constituent Castro Valley, and I'll continue to do what I think is the right thing. Vote against mutton busting, vote against the TRL, or at least take a neutral position because you're not exempting adult shops out of that, or the vape ordinance because you're not exempting adult shops out of that. If the board goes down the road of trying to put housing on this site, I'll vote against that too, because I know that's not the will of the community. And so I'm sticking to what I think is right. I've always been taught, if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. And I'm going to stand for what I've heard my constituents say. I know their values are in the right place on this particular issue. And it's not often I pull out the trump card of it's my district, but I'm pulling that out because I've lost too many battles at this Board of Supervisors on issues in my district, so. But you guys can do what you want to do, and I'll just continue to do and serve my constituents and the broad interest of the public to the best of my ability.
Vice President Carson?
Motion, I'll make a motion.
No, I wasn't going to make a motion. I mean, I'll hold on, but I just want to say, Supervisor Miley, you know, first of all, I represent a lot of the unincorporated area, and I get it handed to me a lot, too, okay? And I think, though, that we all come to this dais with what we believe is right. First, I think that we try to respect the district supervisor. I've been on the end of that respect, and I appreciate that, and I know more than often you have been given that same respect. But I have to be really clear to you, I have to be really clear. I almost am to the point where I couldn't live with myself if I passed the opportunity to not explore having everything the community is talking about, plus, you say, I think you said forty, forty units, I say more towards fifty, sixty. I kind of lowered it ten after you talked, but, you know, if we did not explore being able to house low-income veterans that are one step out into the cold, to build them a home that is located on a Bart Line, on bus lines, it can't be any better when it comes to being transit-rich. I couldn't live with myself. I said, "No, it's okay, just rehab the building and spend the money." It's not even a good financial decision. So I just, I'm sorry, I appreciate the fact that your district, nine and a half times out of ten, that will get me. But on this one, we need the housing, and we need housing for our veterans, because a lot of the people out on those streets right now are veterans, and that's just not right. So, you know, I'll wait for Supervisor Carson's motion, but I just, you know, that's just how I feel, and I apologize to you. I would love to vote with you, it's going to be a heck of a lot easier for me in the future, but I just couldn't live with myself.
Same goes for me, Supervisor Carson. I'm sorry. Supervisor Miley. Vice President Carson, excuse me. I also want to say I have deep respect for the representation that you have for the people of Castro Valley. You've demonstrated that. There's tremendous benefit that's been given to that community by your district and your leadership, and you can see it just by driving through the streets and the improvements. I've lived in this area for over sixty years, and I've seen the improvements firsthand. You've done a tremendous job, and this is not at all disrespectful to you or your leadership or the people of Castro Valley. There's an immediate impending need in our community, and we can't ignore it. Land is very, very vital and very precious, and there's so little of it, and we have very little discretion over any land at all, except that within the unincorporated. So I also see this, again, at the end of the line, it's going to be a win-win situation, and I believe HARD can still be a partner in this. Vice President Carson?
I'd like to move the Option B, which would include not only the possibility of providing space for services and programs and meeting places for veterans, but also housing for veterans at that site. If this turns out to be a historic landmark, there's been other facilities, tons of them that have been historic landmarks, that have been able to meet the needs of the historic landmark and still be able to keep the facing and the infrastructure that's needed and build the housing. So, you know, but again, enough's been said, we need housing, and veterans, and unsheltered people need housing today, not tomorrow.
I'll second it, but Supervisor Carson, can I add that our goal is to move towards 100% affordable there?
Sure.
And I want to be clear, because I know that this has been a disconnect in the community, because I've heard this, we're not talking about a homeless facility. We are talking about affordable housing for veterans who have served this country. And to set the bar any lower than 100%, I think would be wrong, so.
I accept that.
Okay. On the item, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposition?
Aye.
Three ayes. Just one. Yes.
Just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it your board's pleasure to move Item C as well?
If that's, it's up to the maker of the motion.
Well, no, you can make a separate motion and move Item C as well if you like, to transfer the administrative responsibility from the General Services Agency to Community Development Agency for the purpose of accomplishing Item B.
Yeah, I'll accept that, too. See, a new motion, I take any Item C as well.
On that item, okay, the first one was three ayes and one opposed, and one excused on the second item. Now, physician?
Aye.
Three ayes, one opposed, and one excused.
Thank you.
On Item C. Okay. Thank you for your patience on this item.